All right. We'll call this regular session of the Hood River Commission to Order. Are there any modifications to the agenda for staff?
Yeah. President Shepard, one more citation for executive session, which would, this is from General Counsel, which would be RS 1826602F. Consider information exempt from public inspection.
Call this regular session. Exempt from public inspection.
Are we, are we good?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, and then the second is simply there's a, the Public Works Contract that John referred to in his memo is in front of you, which will be part of Action Item B.
Correct, that's okay.
Okay.
That's it from staff. Perfect. I didn't get anything from commissioners, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Was there any public comment received? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, was your question adequately answered?
Yeah, we're gonna, yes.
Okay, and just need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A move that we approve the consent agenda for items A, B, and C as written.
Second.
Move and seconded all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right guy.
Share his eyes as well, consent agenda passes. I did not receive any questions regarding the informational reports. Was there anything that needed to be addressed? Okay. We'll just move straight to the Executive Director's report.
I will let my report stand as written. If any questions, I'm here to answer.
Any questions for Michael?
There was a comment, if I remember right. Had to deal with the, the Parks and Rec meeting that both Michael and I attended. I think there's a, maybe an opportunity here to help us out long-term funding-wise with our recreational area. And I think we ought to spend a little bit of effort to, to see if there's not something there. And what I'm talking about is that the park and rec organization is looking to develop bonds and, and tax base increase to fund part of their park and rec organization. And does it make sense to see if we can partner up with them? Hood River County and Hood River City is kind of thinking about the same thing to, to see if we could fund, as in our example, fund all or part of our recreational funding needs through this tax base. Now, that may require us to somehow sublease or lease or give property over to parks and recs. Don't know. Not trying to make an opinion one way or another there, but there seems to me there are, there's a a potential opportunity that we could tag on here and help solve our long-term funding issue that we have with a recreational area at least, if not more than that. You have, you were there, you're, you're chair in the meeting.
Well, I'd like to say as, as sitting in for Jerry and, and full disclosure, I'm also the Chair of the Parks and Rec District. So, just to, there's no conflict of interest, but, and, and I, I could say as Chair of the Board, but not speaking on behalf of the, of the Board for Parks and Rec, we, we would absolutely be thrilled to work with the Port and with the city, the county, the school district. We're all happy to work together and whatever the Port would decide, you know, I, I think that Parks and Rec would be interested in, in, in working with you in, in any way we can.
I, I think it's just an opportunity that it may not lead to anything, but at least we're showing we're trying. And maybe we can make something out of this pigment. So I don't know how we would proceed with this.
Well, when?
Care.
I assume Parks and Rec goes out for, is there a bond, to be a bond request?
We're not sure yet. Our next step is to kind of reconvene as a board and determine what our, our next steps are going to be, and then we'll be reaching out and probably have conversations with. When Jerry comes back, I can come as a guest and talk to him.
Where they're going, what they need to do, that would be the time for us to hear that.
I think in the meantime, we internally ought to maybe think about this. What would be willing to do to package this thing together? Make sure we understand what the annual costs are. We just finished the next year plan. We've gone through a 10-year plan. We have a kind of a vision of what this thing's gonna cost.
Well, I'd like to hear a proposal, because I don't know what they're proposing. So whenever that's.
Yeah. I think we can do a little homework on both sides, so we're ready to sit down and, and talk about that possible.
Sure.
It's my understanding that the, the staff is working on that currently, and then they'll present it to our, our boards respectively, that we've been talking about stuff currently.
Right. Mark Hickok touched upon it.
Yeah, that's what I hear. It seems like a win-win situation if we can make it happen, so.
So we'll expect it to hear, I guess.
Just hate to lose an opportunity if there's one.
Absolutely, yeah.
What it makes it that does, the county and the city all are able to give their transient rent revenue for their campground facilities. So that does free up some money that isn't currently pulled to our purse.
Which would be huge.
Yeah, let's. Interested to hear about it, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, no committee reports today. There are two action items.
Well, let me.
There's, there's no action item to take on that. We're gonna hear from, we have.
No, 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 what I meant is, I think, I think Kevin and I ought to at least give you a taste that we have received bids on the RBMC contract. We have gone through Phase One, which is to evaluate the written bids with a team of five evaluators. We decided that, that all three bidders are sufficiently qualified and gave a strong enough written present, written proposal that we're moving all three of them to the oral section. So orals will commence Monday here. It'll be Monday, Tuesday for the orals, and then Wednesday, the team will evaluate and come up with a recommendation to award. On Friday, the 13th, we will take our recommendation to the Bi-State Working Group. And then the following Tuesday, which is the next port meeting, we will present to you what we believe is the, the, the best candidate, and then seek your approval to go ahead and start negotiations for awards. That's all.
I'm glad all three were qualified, that's good.
Yeah, they were, they were pretty good.
Good.
Anything to add, Kevin?
Uh, just that, uh, the boardroom that you're gonna, that you're sitting in right now will be occupied for those two days, as will, uh, my office in the back in the east wing, and that'll be where the firms will be preparing their problem sets. So it's gonna be a pretty hectic space at the port office buildings early next week, and just appreciate port staff and any commissioners that might be involved. Certainly pardon the, all the chaos, but it, it's going well and getting some good responses. I'm checking all the references this week. And so I, I think we're gonna have a very nice, nice presentations next week, and I think the Bi-State Working Group will be happy with what the evaluation committee comes up with.
Do you have everything you need to make that a successful day on this end?
Yep, we've got, we've got Starbucks coming in for the evaluation team. We've got, uh, box lunches. Mike, we did get good news that Sam Hunaidi, one of our evaluators, will not need to zoom in, so he's actually going to be coming into Hood River. So all five members of the evaluation committee will be present and meeting the firms face-to-face. So that's, that's nice. So Jen, that, that's one less thing we have to worry about for, for Monday.
We're to hearing about that, next meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Kevin, do you want to just go ahead and take care of your action item?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So Fred mentioned that we've got the ARPA agreement. Uh, this is, this is very atypical for grants in the sense that it's not a reimbursement project or reimbursement program. Uh, once this is approved within a week, I've been told that they're going to do ACH transfer into the port's LGIP account. And then we'll, uh, the port will be required to do quarterly reports showing how we're spending that money. Um, so there were just a couple of things just that we should probably just bring to your attention. Uh, I did have Bill Ollie review the contract, and there, he did have some concerns about indemnity provisions, and it kind of felt that it was pretty broad. Um, and, but, you know, at the end of the day, in my, in, in telling or asking ODOT if there was any room for movement on those terms of the agreement, it did not look likely. So, you know, there, obviously these agreements are very much in, written from the state's perspective. Uh, but, uh, this is a, a wonderful opportunity that doesn't come around very often. So I would, uh, the only amendment I would make to the motion that's in the packet is just that we'll have legal and administrative review before signing off on the agreement to see if there's any way to lessen some of the indemnity clauses. But other than that, I would certainly recommend approving the grant agreement with ODOT and, uh, subject to legal and administrative review.
Any questions for Kevin? Then, make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve Grover State Fiscal Recovery Fund grant agreement in amount of $5 million for the replacement of the Hood River White Sand Interstate Bridge, subject to legal and administrative review.
A second, a motion.
Move and seconded all in favor?
Aye.
Strike guy.
Share his eyes as well. Approved, thank you Kevin.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Uh, last one, Lisa Jones.
Thanks, you guys. Hey, I'm, just want to apologize, there's a couple of mistakes in my memo that I just presented you. I was under a real crunch of time. Bits came in at 10:00 this morning, and we were trying to mash this together to get in before budget meeting, and I'll clear those up as we go through. We received two bids, one bid from Knife River Corporation, and one bid from Granite Construction Company. Granite Construction Company was the low bid on all the base bid, alternate one and two. Base bid is completion in seven days, and that's a seven-day complete bridge closure. Alternate one is completion in five days, that's complete five-day closure, and alternate two is a complete closure for three days. If you look to the bid tabs, you can see where we came in at uh, $545,000 for the base bid, $645,000 for the alternate one, and $795 for alternate two. Engineers' estimates for the base bid were $300,000, and as I warned you prior, we just, there, there is bidding projects right now is absolutely crazy, and the sky's the limit. We do however have in our bridge repair fund, the funds available to do this in any of those alternates. Um, so what we have to make a decision here today is, how long do you want to close the bridge, and how much do you want to spend to do that? So I, if down at the bottom here, the clarification I need to make is, option one is for completion in seven days, option two is for completion in five days, and option three is for completion in, um, in three days.
Do these? First one and two.
Yeah, that's correct.
Are we, over the course of a weekend on any of these, or are we talking five days of each Monday through Friday?
I can go across the weekend, it's totally up to us to set the days, so I have complete control of that.
Okay. Trying to minimize in my thought process here, workdays.
Me too.
Which? Sunday could get us from.
We've, we've never done any, we've never done a closure this long before. We've never had a project that just required complete access to the bridge.
President Shepard, Commissioner Strike, you know, one thing, one thing bear in mind is that the bridge in the Dallas is closed Thursday through Monday morning.
I believe they have suspended that work currently.
Okay.
Oh, is that right?
Okay.
Certainly investigate that.
Right. What's the timeframe for, we say go today, what is the timeframe?
If we were to go today, I'm pretty sure I can have constructed, construction on site by the 10th of June.
Fred still here? When do we see a real uptick in traffic over the course of the next three months, and is there any period of time that perhaps i- is a little bit of a down?
Yeah, we're just talking, talking with guns, one, Michael. So, uh, we're writing, we're getting into the sweet spot.
Yeah.
And sweet spot are the big days. But if I were to choose, I, I, I would go with your, where you were leaning. Take this over a weekend. Like a Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, but how about June, July, August, June?
July and do it as early as June as you could. If you can do it earlier than Memorial Day, do it, but once you get in close to Memorial Day, then back off and wait till the second, the second week.
Second week in June, okay.
Yeah.
How about, how much was in the, the work plan for this year, the budget this year for this work? How, how much was in the budget for this, for this year?
$200,000, I believe.
$200,000.
And there's also, the, the, the longer the bridge is closed at $25,000 a day is what we lose in revenue, so that needs to be considered.
Well, you have enough, you know, collectively.
For workdays.
Not for this specific item, but.
For the bridge repair fund.
Which one would you recommend? How many, I'm sorry, I got the numbers, okay. Which one would you recommend?
I would recommend the three-day, so none of us have to change our names.
That's an awful.
So, but if you look at, if you look at the, if you calculate the, the ask plus the loss, you know, so we're looking at, for the seven day, it'd be $720,000 versus $770,000 for the five day, but then that jumps to $870,000 for the three day.
It's an extra $100,000. To not to go from one workday to three.
Right.
One weekday.
And, and I think if we, if you were to make a decision to go with the five days, bridging that over a weekend and, and two workdays, it's the workdays that I'm most concerned about. Um, you know, because that means everybody's driving all the way around. So my concern is, can we get it over the weekend? And, you know, I, I think it, the five is doable.
Are, are you sure that they will honor $795 if we say over the weekend? And they're not gonna come back for premium time.
Absolutely. Our contract has written that it could be any day of the week.
Okay.
And there's also a massive penalty, and I believe it's $200,000 a day for not making it. So there's a lot of initiative to get this, the bits were given to us to be sure that they could get it done in the day in those alternates as we presented it.
Chari, charities don't get run underwood, do they? No, they don't.
Two other questions for you.
Sure.
One, uh, we talked about having to put a couple of lateral bracing beams under, I guess, is it the Oregon side?
It is.
And will that be done before this work is done?
If, I don't know the answer, that I'm meeting with Mark Libby on Thursday, and we're actually getting out on the bridge and getting in the lift and going and looking at that work.
Okay, so if we can't get that done, what does that mean?
Uh, it just means we do it immediately afterwards. Luckily, that work can all be done from underneath the bridge deck and wouldn't involve closures.
Okay, so there's no structural issue with the.
No, there is not. There is not.
Okay, and the, the second question is, whichever one, did they take any exceptions to our specification?
None. Uh, and I've had the good fortune of working with Granite Construction when I worked at Clickatack County, outstanding contractor.
All right, Commissioners, uh, thoughts here on which one, uh, closing it for a week is not a recommendation I per me and one want to make. For $50,000 more money net, we can do five, or for $150,000 more money net, it's three.
And by net you mean including the lost revenue?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, that loss of revenue, how is it calculated? Because you don't have the same revenue coming over the weekend.
It's a, it's a rough estimate.
It's a estimate I'd do.
I'm sure it's pretty close.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Well, based on not wanting to get a whole bunch of phone calls, I'd blow for the three-day. And you've got the $200,000 a day if they blow it.
That's correct.
Which, if they blow it, it helps us budget-wise.
That's true, but I don't. That's true, but I don't, I, I think they're gonna be pretty, I, I'm pretty sure they took a look at this and made sure they could make it happen.
Commissioner Strike?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the three-day, is the fact that it's money well spent, and it gives us a little bit of, I guess, comfort zone, if they do have to delay going extra day or two, it won't be over the weekend, or it won't be a five or seven-day weekend, or work week, so I'm, I'm in favor of a three-day.
Okay.
I think if we did a three-day, Fred, and you would be able to confirm this, it seems like Fridays are probably a little bit more flexible day for workers.
I would agree with that.
So I'd go with, I'd do Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and a Monday?
Well, if it's three days, well.
Oh, sorry, Friday, yeah, correct, sorry.
He's planning on the.
Yeah, I was, I was already picking the five, sorry.
No, I, I'm thinking Mondays are much harder for people to get out of work, so, that's what I would, if we're gonna do it, then I want the Friday.
We gotta do it, alright, uh, then one of you.
You guys care about school year dates and schools out.
We gotta get it done as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
Alright, somebody make a.
Because schools are still, like, end of June, like, yeah, twenty, or. Yeah, super late, so.
We're on the same page, so if somebody wants to make a motion, we're on the same page.
Move that we accept Granite's, um, proposal based on alternate two, three-day closure. Have the closure start on a Friday and complete on Sunday, uh, for 795,000 dollars.
Thank you, Commissioners.
My second.
Alright, move to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right guy. Chair's eye, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work. Uh, Commissioner Strike, anything to add?
Uh, no sir.
Mr. Fox? Mr. Shepard?
No.
Me? Alright, directives, I don't know outside of action items, I don't believe there are any today, anybody write anything down, okay? Let's go pass that, and then I will recess regular session and open executive session under O R S one nine two six six oh two F, info exempt from public inspection, and O R S one nine two six six oh two E, real estate negotiations.